Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 28th open session of the North Andover Select Board. We are now out of our executive session and into our open session, and I invite you to stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll take public comment. Is there anybody here to make public comment? I think that's... Come on up. Take your time. It's all right.
You sure?
Yeah.
Outstanding.
Yeah, whatever.
My name is Lou Napoli, 51 Jetwood Street, North Andover, and chairman of the Conservation Commission.
Hi, Lou.
I recently talked with Peter Boynton, the art master, and what brought it on was, recently, we had an egregious land clearing on the lake. And that sparked, I think, in my side, since I became on the Conservation Commission, to me, my most important thing was the lake. And I call it the lake because I can, because I've been here long enough. Most people call it Lake Achigal. Most people that know it, they call it the lake. But they were some people that clear cut in front of their house. One house took like 30 mature maple trees, oak trees, pristine forest, and just clear cut it. So they got a clear view of the lake. So the one next room, fortunately, we caught him. He only took down 19 trees. So we're going to process and enforce them. They've been cooperative. You know, they're playing, you know, I shouldn't say, you know, they're just playing ignorance. But they are agreeing with us, and it's an extensive replication project that both of them have to pay for. So but that got me thinking, because all the years, you know, I go by Ipswich all the time, and one by one, you see a dock, another dock, another dock, another dock, you know? And they were all illegal. And I questioned a couple times, and they would say, oh, it's, we're grandfathered. And I said, no, you're not. I mean, I was supposedly grandfathered in my garage on Inglewood Street that we built in 1969, and I had to get out because they said that I exceeded my grandfather clause. And we didn't want to bother go to court, so that's another story. But so I talked to him, and one of these guys, one of these people, violators, had a dock in the water. I says, you got to take it out. And he goes, no, he said, when I bought this house, it said that I could have a dock on the lake. And I says, no, you can't. He says, well, they listed it. The real listed dock on the water. And I'm like, well, I don't know what to tell you. So when I saw the plans, there's waterfront, that the planning board has jurisdiction. Then there's wetlands, no disturb, which comes under our jurisdiction. So to get to the lake, you have to go through the wetlands, the no disturb zone, to put your dock. I says, you can't. He said, well, I want to file an application. I said, you can, but requires a waiver, which you'll never get. So I talked to Peter, we were going to get a subcommittee together, which I haven't heard, but to go after these people, the lake is the only, the greatest, when I was a kid, it had Lake Achigal, not the end of his greatest asset. And when I was a kid, you could go up to the lake and take a cup of water and drink it.
That's true. My grandmother used to talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, you could look, you could look 10, 12 feet down, and you could see the bottom. So before it gets to a point like Forest Lake, and Canterbury Lake, and all these lakes, and that's our drinking water. And if we lose it, then we'll be drinking out of the merrimack. And I will show you a picture of that, but you would get totally disgusted at what pictures that I have. But so I would like to urge the Select Board to look at these things. And the other thing is, the main thing for me is motorboats in the water. Now, two-stroke motorboats aren't even manufactured anymore, because they can't even come near EPA standards as far as exhaust. Four-stroke outboard motors barely meet the standard. So we got fuel, gas, unburnt fuel, unburnt oil, every day, or whenever they're sculling season, to go with, on these boats. And what I want, I suggested, is electric motors, which I have right here. They make electric motors now, five to 50 horse. And I'll leave this, I'll leave this, I downloaded it for you. I'm not, I'm not very computer literate. And like, get a pontoon boat with like, with an outboard, electric outboard. It'd be safer for picking up people, because, you know, the chief is here, he, or even anybody that has a 16-foot boat, pulling somebody over the side is almost impossible, especially when they're wet. And, you know, who's running, who's doing it? Most of the time, the person that's trying to pull the person in, he ends up in the water. So a pontoon boat, they come right up on them. They're like, most of them have ladders. They can get in on themselves. So for safety, I'd like to see if you guys give the fire department money to buy one, because they use it for rescue boat. You know, even in the river, they're, you know, they're bigger, be as big as you want. But I really think that at some point, we should stop Brook School. It's not like they don't have the money to be able to replace all this stuff, you know? And, you know, and that's the thing that sticks in my, that'll be another story I'll come and visit you guys about, is schools not paying five cents in taxes. It just, there's going to be a, like, when I talked to Melissa, when she first got on, she talked to me, and I used to tell her, I don't like black and white. I like gray. I like to be flexible, even when I'm on the commission. You know, I don't like to hammer people. They're residents of the town. But if you do something wrong, then we have a different, we have a different story. And I, and I, and I don't lie. Rosemary and Dick know me for a long time. I don't lie.
I remember when we appointed you. I remember, yeah.
16 years ago.
Yeah, I remember it well.
And I'm like the baby almost. We have, we have over 100 years' experience on the Conservation Commission. We have a really, really outstanding board. We have three civil engineers, an attorney. We have a retired state trooper who knows the bylaw like the back of his hand.
Inside and out.
And me, a 50-year dirt merchant. There isn't, there isn't, there isn't a place in this town that I haven't dug and hauled.
Yes, but you know where the dirt should be and shouldn't be, right?
Yeah.
To be on the commission.
I could tell you, I'll just tell you a quick story. I want to tell you what. There was a house on Cotton Lane. So the woman wants to put in a built-in swimming pool. So they go on, we do it online. So I said to the lady, I says, have you ever tried planting a tree in your backyard? And she's looking at me, everybody else is looking at me, like, what am I, crazy? She says, no. I says, there's rocks the size of your car in your backyard. And I says, you want me to tell you where they came from? Because I hauled them. They all came from that, when they built the hydroelectric dam. It was granite, like, they all out in Cotton Lane, Johnny Kick, all up. That was before the wet, that was before the wetlands act. So there we go, dig a hole to plant a pool, that have to dig it the size of this building, to put a swimming pool in.
To get a pool in there.
But I, like I said, I really would think you, at some point, you guys should really get after Brook School, because they're polluting the lake. I mean, there's no getting away from it. If they're running two-stroke motors, it's stuff is awful. It's gas and oil mixed, so it just goes right out the exhaust.
But we have, it's an electric policy, except I believe for fire in Brook School. Isn't that?
Right, it's because they've always had a rescue boat.
No, I know. I understand that.
And they needed, they needed the speed.
I'm just clarifying.
But like Lou said, the electric motors have come a long way, since the small trolling motors.
From five to 50 horse now.
Yeah, so they can push a boat pretty well.
You know, and they're efficient, they have more torque on the electric motor than they do on a gas engine now. They're really, they're really the hard setup. And like I said, pulling people, it's a safety factor. I mean, I, like, the fire department has an inflatable. Fantastic. I had numerous inflatables. But pulling somebody over the, over a pontoon is near impossible. I mean, you've got to have some really strong people. Most of the time, to get in our inflatable, we start climbing from the motor to get in, because the height difference. But I think, I think it's time, it's time to start to protect the lake before it's too late.
Thank you.
I think all these, and all these people, and I hate to say it, because I hate the word, think they're in, because they paid a gazillion dollars for the house, and they're on the lake, they feel like they're entitled to use the lake any way they want. And I hate that word, entitled. Because I had worked for everything my whole life. And so that's, that's why I came today. And I know
Thank you.
It wasn't a policy, but I know you guys are trying to institute a policy to the lake. That's right, I hear that. So I think it's time for the Select Board to step up and start clamping down on these people that think that the lake is theirs. And it's not. And they said, this gentleman here said, well, I want to be able to put my kayak in the water. I said, well, there's two access points that the rest of the town gets to use. You can be just like them. He don't like, he don't like me too much anyways.
Yeah, there's a fee involved, too. There would be a fee involved as well.
Yeah. If you could afford $1.8 million for a house, you could buy that resident's sticker.
Thank you for coming in to see us tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Lou.
That says, that's the paperwork for the gas engines.
Thank you for sharing that, yeah.
It's nice seeing all you people.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Lou.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Fine. Hearing none, we're going to move along to item A, under governmental reports and update on the MEMA filing.
I don't even know where to start.
I know.
So, as you know, our initial damage assessment was due to MEMA on Monday, last Monday. So right now, they're in a review period, and we're waiting for kind of a report back on whether or not regionally, we have enough damage reported, so that they would consider engaging FEMA in asking for a declaration of, our disaster declaration. That review could take up to a month or more. So a lot of residents have been emailing me saying, have we heard from MEMA? And I do think it's going to be a little bit before we do hear that. For those people that did not see our letter, we did report $3.4 million in damages to public facilities. So that included the town, the schools, airports, cemeteries. Since we submitted the report, we have discovered approximately $950,000 to $1 million in additional damage to the town, namely, the school track. And we also have heard from the airport that they have approximately $100,000 in additional damage on a runway that they had not seen yet. So those numbers obviously are still low. For residents, we had 309 residents with estimated damages totaling $4.9 million. That does not include the cost to repair the privately owned dam and road that abuts Town Hall, although initial estimates on that from the owners are approximately $1 million. And then we had 56 businesses reporting $21.5 million in damages, many of them small businesses, and currently unable to reopen. So the total estimated damage to the town from the August flooding totals $29.9 million. We have had the Red Cross in town, as well as Team Rubicon. Team Rubicon came in and did what I would call the kind of heavy lifting, moving rugs, moving drywall. And then the crisis cleanup hotline, who are also, is still open, and is still in town and well, and actually is volunteer, is from the Southern Baptist Church, are doing a lot of the mold remediation and water removal still. And so they are still here in doing that. Team Rubicon left this morning. We were very thankful to them. There was 15 of them. They actually lived in the old senior center for almost a week. And they were able to do, to do, assist 14 homeowners. So that was kind of amazing. We were very thankful that they were here. Obviously, the letter that we wrote to MEMA kind of documents everything that happened that day. You know, for me, I'm just very thankful to all of our employees, 911, emergency management, police, fire chiefs, Jim, Andrew, Laurie. I don't even know who I'm missing. So many people, Paul, Joel, the bail, Steve Foster for securing all of our buildings and helping me wet back. But, you know, it's just been kind of a insane two weeks. I don't know if there's any other way to put it, but it has brought us all closer together. So we're looking forward to continuing to work with MEMA and FEMA. If you are a business who is currently struggling, we do have contacts at the state that you can speak with and have been reaching out. So don't hesitate to reach out. We do have a resident assistance program, where you can get $2,500 for the replacement of an appliance, which really is like a hot water heater, a boiler, washer, dryer, that kind of item. So far, we've received 50 applications. We just opened that application on Thursday? Is that Thursday? Andrew, Thursday, right? So we certainly, Andrew and Laurie have been working that application. And we've been kind of, I think the first checks actually went out today for that, or we signed the first one today. We approved the first one today. So I'll get it there eventually. I don't know. First five. So we are working through those as well. In order to qualify for that grant, you do have had to fill out the claim form before we put it on MEMA paperwork in. So right now, that's being offered to the 350 residents who filled that paperwork out and qualify.
So where is that funding coming from?
So that's the funding that you guys approved at your last meeting.
Okay.
And it was Columbia Gas Funding. Yep. So that program has been rolled out. I'm trying to think, I miss anything, Laurie?
So what's the best possible outcome from MEMA? So of the $29 million, almost $30 million, what would you see as an outcome, a possible outcome from MEMA?
It's kind of impossible to know. So what MEMA does is they take our filings and the filings of everybody else in the region, to make a determination on whether or not we've reached their thresholds. But they do go through basically everything we submitted and make a determination whether or not it's an eligible cost. So does, is there insurance that would cover it? Do they think the costs are overinflated? Did we use the FEMA reimbursement guidelines for the hourly wages? So this is just the initial assessment. If MEMA feels that we could be applicable, they will send us to the next step in the process, which is when they actually come out and start interviewing the individual people to see if it actually is legitimate claims or not. We haven't gotten to that point yet. But the way they describe it basically is that they scrub the reports to determine what's going to be eligible and what's not going to be eligible. We know that Andover, Lawrence, Chuxbury, Methuen, Haverhill, and Amesbury, all filed forms as well. So it'll be interesting to see how this goes over the next couple of weeks.
So advice for residents would be to, you need to be patient, right?
Be patient.
Not a quick thing, and probably take as many pictures as possible.
Yes, documents.
Document.
We've been very, really talking to a lot of people about how important it is as you're throwing things away and you're cleaning things, because we don't, we don't want is people to just not clean, right? Or not to take care of, you know, a mold situation that has arisen. So, you know, documenting all of that, saving your receipts, taking pictures of what you've thrown away, is all really important in going through this process. We are seeing that people's insurance claims are being denied, both businesses and residents. So.
I can say, if you throw the item away because it's destroyed or whatever, it could hurt you. Take that from the experience.
Yeah, it's a tough situation.
Pictures, pictures, pictures.
Yeah.
Do your own pricing, if, when they come out, say, well, no, I paid this. It's a lot of work, but you have to do it, Laurie.
But this is definitely just a waiting game. I will say, Jim and I had a sigh of relief on Friday when we had regular rain and everything was good. You know, we don't want, right, seven inches of rain, and then followed by additional three inches of rain is not ideal. And hopefully, we don't have to face that again for a long time.
Well, I just have two questions. The business estimate, $21.5 million, does that account for business interruption at the same time, or is that just material damage?
So it really depends on what they put in. Technically, though, it does not, it really does not count for business interruption.
Because that would mean it would still be running for some reason.
Right. What MEMA really is looking for is, and what their form calls for, is structural damage or supplies and materials type damage.
Floating for fridge ragers?
Yeah, so they ask for a percentage, and that's basically how we like, how we frame it. So if you look at the filing, you know, you have some businesses that, for instance, were leasing, right? And they may have filed for no structural damage at all, because all the structural damage was, came under somebody else's filing. But they, you know, we have, here are salons that lost all of their supplies, right? We, like, that kind of thing, are stores and companies that lost all of their
Furniture.
wholesale, their furniture, everything. So, you know, a lot of it has been, some of it has been structural, and some of it has been materials.
And I guess for residents, following, you mentioned mold, right? So let's just say you have the event on the 8th, and mold doesn't appear until after. Is there an opportunity for those homeowners to file supplemental? Because it's tied to the same event. I know that it's really tricky.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't think it will matter at this point, right? So when, if we get past this original threshold, and then MEMA comes back out, yes, right? Because what happens is, if a declaration of disaster was declared, individuals apply for assistance on their own directly to FEMA. So, you know, you have your chance to do it that way. But, you know, I also don't want to set expectations that aren't realistic, because if you look at Hawaii right now, they had a declaration of disaster declared, and people got $750. So I think
The whole family, and the no-house.
Yes. So I think, you know, having realistic expectations of what that individual assistance may look like is really important.
If we can even get to that point.
If we even get to that point, which I don't know that we will, and I'm trying to set realistic expectations for the public, that, you know, it's major thresholds that need to be met, and many of them, right? They're set by the federal government. So, and that's why I think these smaller grant programs, and even, you know, things like the assistance that the fire department did by going and pumping out people's basements, right, were things that expenses that people didn't have to take on on their own.
So really, MEMA should be looked at as a reinforcement, if we ever get there. I mean, people should be taking their own measures to get themselves back up and running.
Yes, absolutely. Buying through their insurance policies, if they have them, you know, applying for this reimbursement program, whatever's available.
It's not going to be fast.
No. It's not going to be fast.
I don't know if this is even appropriate, but is it possible to work with our local HBAC companies to see if we can, you know, to help homeowners? Like, I know they have stepped up in other ways, I just don't know.
Yeah, so the state has mentioned, you know, MassSafe as an option, and whether or not they can kind of escalate the MassSafe process, because that is a really lengthy process to go through. You know, what we've been discovering, as we're going through kind of this reimbursement program, is that there are some people who maybe lost their washer and dryer, and don't have the money to go buy a new washer and dryer. So we're trying to figure out how to work with local vendors for that, right? Where if somebody could go in and we purchase their washer and dryer, and kind of let us know, and then we could just pay the vendor directly.
Because they have to pay it and get reimbursed. That's our process.
Yes. So we're kind of walking through all of that process right now, and trying to figure out ways to assist in that way, the best that we can. I think a lot of the problem is, like anything, is that you've got 350 residents who maybe have damage to their boilers or hot water heaters, and now are all trying to get them at the same time. So you've got supply chain issues as well. A reminder from Paul Hutchins is that if A reminder from Paul Hutchins is that if your washer, your dryer, your boiler, your hot water heater, your electricity work wet, you nearly need to call for an inspection. Please don't put them on, while you'll have Chief Ware at your house. Nobody wants that. So if you could do that, we would appreciate it. And people have been really good. And they've been, Paul, Joel, and the Beal, Lieutenant Kilquinn, you know, Titan Nuzbaum have all worked together to get those inspections done. So we've appreciated that.
Well, I think that's really important for people to know that even if they can't front the money, they can call you for help. And maybe we can work it a different way.
That's what we're, that's what we're working on today. Yep, so it's been really helpful.
This might be getting a little bit either far afield, but on the MEMA front, does any part of their process look at preventative measures for down the road?
So there's grants, there are grants available, and those are conversations that we've been having with the governor and the lieutenant governor and DM Safety and all of the wonderful legislators that have come out to visit us and the congressman and congresswoman as well. You know, we just finished our MVP process, so because of that, there are grants that are available to us. I think the issue is not, the issue, and this is a kind of conversation I had with Senator Feingold, you know, he's like, how do, what do we do to mitigate this? And I'm like, how do we not make it, how do we make it not rain seven inches in one day, right? I think, I think any pole, any pipe that we could put in would handle that. And so, you know, but looking at the dams and the culverts that we own, right? There are grant programs that are available for that type of mitigation, for climate mitigation.
I'm going to get into the culvert, but there is, listen, we're going to have to figure out some sort of flood, you know, water management process, right?
I think everybody is.
Create capacity and we know, we know that we have this issue.
Yeah.
I was wondering if MEMA is a part of trying to avoid your future.
Yeah, not so much. But I think it's something that obviously, you know, when we had our meeting with other communities, we had communities, you know, as far as Needham and Natick and kind of the refrain from everybody was the same, right? We all got this intense rain, we all had a lot of damage, we were all affected equally, and now it's kind of the situation of other hundred year storms now one year storms, right? And how do we, how do we prepare for that? And I don't.
And we don't know the answer to that.
I wish I had that answer, right? But it's certainly something that we continue to talk about.
Let's hope they're five hundred year storms.
The nary table needs to change.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Any other comments?
We are very appreciative of everybody's continued hard work across the board.
Amazing work.
Every department has been involved.
You guys have been working tirelessly.
People have no idea.
Yeah.
Right. It's behind the scenes.
And all the meetings. Yeah, it's been, it's been a lot. Yeah, it feels like we've made a difference, which always is nice, so.
We appreciate it. Okay. Would you like to move on to our next favorite subject?
Recycling!
Give us an update on the recycling.
The top priority priority doesn't have water in the basement right now.
So I have notes all on me. So I would say our new recycling program has struggled since it's rolled out. And Jim and Laurie and I and Tara at the DBW have been working really closely with the company regarding those performance issues. And I just want to apologize on behalf of the administration, because we expect more and I think residents deserve more. And it's as frustrating for us to have to wake up in the morning to thirty report-its about recycling not picked up. I will say that since our meeting last week, they have been much more responsive to my emails. Even today, we had kind of a issue and it was dealt with as a personnel issue almost immediately. So I think that we definitely have their ear right now, but it is frustrating and we recognize that. One thing I just wanted, I know a lot of people have, you know, that have been calling me or reporting things, have, you know, said, we're paying for the service. I just want to remind people, it's a free service that we're getting, the recycling pickup, just the pickup. And I think that actually, in some ways, might be detrimental to us, because we don't have a ton of teeth, because what are we, we're not going to leave them, right? So it makes it a little bit difficult. But some of the things that we've kind of learned over the last week is all the old recycle bins, we picked up on the next three Saturdays. So if you.
The red ones?
The red ones, or even if you just had one that you were using and it just said, you know, big recycling sticker on it, and you don't want it anymore, if you put it outside on Saturdays, they are coming to pick them up. Missed pickups that have been reported will be picked up on Wednesdays and Fridays. So if you're a missed pickup on a Monday or Tuesday, you'll pick it up on Wednesday. If you're a missed pickup on a Wednesday or Thursday, it'll be picked up on Friday, until they kind of get theirselves on a great system. But right now, the missed pickups that have been gone and reported, so what happens is you report your recycling's not picked up, it goes to me, Jim, and Tara. Poor Tara sends it over to them, right? And then they put it on a list for the drivers. And so that's how they're handling that right now. If you requested a smaller sized bin, those are being swapped on Wednesdays. So if you have a big bin and you don't want it, you want to go down to the sixty-four gallon bin, those are being swapped on Wednesdays.
Do they have a supply of the, like?
They do.
I've seen a lot sitting out for more than a week.
They do, you mean of the smaller bins?
Of the big bins that say, take me and swap me for a smaller bin, so I.
So they're working on those on Wednesdays, but they, they said they just got two hundred.
But I was thinking, I knew they had run out, but now they have them.
They have two hundred more. So they're swapping those out now. They also have additional big bins that they're dropping off to people too who requested additional bins.
So that's happening too. Is that free of charge?
That's free, yep.
Do they give a reason for the missed pickups? Is this just figuring out the schedule?
A lot of it's just figuring it out. So we, when they took this over, we didn't have, like, drawn out trash routes. So they have taken the time, they've told us, I haven't seen them quite yet, to computerize all of those routes. And now that they've computerized those routes, I do feel like the number of missed pickups has dropped over the last week since things have started to kind of, I'm looking at Jim for sure and Sam.
Well, yeah, the kids got to be on the resident's side, too. People are still trying to get used to the odd even weeks.
We are.
And putting out the wrong week.
Putting it in the wrong week, yeah.
Yeah, they don't, they don't get picked up because they are on the wrong week. And now they've got.
So you just leave it out and when it disappears, move out with it.
I put it out every week and sometimes it'll disappear.
There was, it takes longer because all of the totes have not been properly placed as well. So, you know, when you roll your tote up to the road, it's supposed to be lid out, handled towards you. So they're going to be handing out stickers for the totes that explain how to put them. So they showed us a picture of it the other day. So they'll be going out and basically being kind of thrown on the side of the recycle bin that shows people exactly how to put it, because if it's correctly put, it has to be, you know, a little bit away from your mailbox so that the arm can come out.
Away from other bins.
Away from other bins. If it's correctly put, it really is a quick process, but when it's not correctly put, it kind of slows things down a little bit.
Something that's interesting is, like, I live on a one-way street. And I live on the opposite side of the arm. So what do I do? Do I put the bin on the other side of the street?
No, you can still, you'll still put it, I mean, if it's a one-way street, they're going to have to walk around and get it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not, it's definitely not.
Thank goodness that's not too long.
Yeah, I mean, I rolled this program out in a city, and it was definitely much more difficult, because it was so dense and we had all street parking. Here, I think, when everyone gets the hang of it, and they get the hang of it, it's actually going to be probably a much faster process, but it does take time. The recycling pile next to the bin will be picked up as promised. We've been very clear with them that they agreed to pick it up.
I appreciate that, because that's been on repeat.
I think I only saw one reported this week of somebody not having a box picked up next to theirs. So I think I'm feeling a little better about that. One place we have struggled is that there were some condos who are not allowed recycling under the bylaw, but at some point, historically, have mistakenly been given bits. And so that has become a little bit of an issue. So the way our bylaw is written is that if you are a condo association, and there are some that were grandfathered in, so I'm not talking about those ones, they're on our list and highlighted. But if you're a condo association and you have more than nine units, or you're part of an apartment complex that has more than nine units, technically under our bylaw, you do not get recycling or trash pickup. And again, there's some things that are kind of spelled out within the bylaw, and there's nothing in here that kind of allows us to supersede that. So we, and it actually is the same for commercial, but there are some businesses, there's a handful, maybe thirty, that were grandfathered in before the bylaw changed, and those people still get recycling and trash pickup. So it's definitely kind of a confusing and convoluted system. So we've been kind of struggling with how to deal with that, right? People who are getting a service and suddenly they're not getting a service. But we also have a long list of condo associations who have called us and said, we'd love to get recycling. And we haven't, because recycling has a cost. Not the picking up, but the actual throwing away, not throwing away.
The actual recycling.
I'm struggling here.
Recycling.
Thank you. Just corrected my verbiage like ten times, and I've tried to get through this process. So one of the things that we've been talking about is recommending granting every condo association with over nine units, four bins, to keep in their common area, so they could put the junk mail in it, you know, and it would encourage recycling, which, I mean, which the state really does want us to do. And so that's one of the things that we're kind of mulling over, if that would be kind of a proper use. Eventually, though, I do think we'll have to go to town meeting and change the bylaw if we want to make any more kind of wider changes than that. You know, it's hard when the bylaw, I don't know when this bylaw was created, but our job is to administer them, right? And so it's hard when we're seeing things that don't comply and we're trying to make that right. So figuring that out is something that we've been working on.
One of the comments I've seen a lot is, you know, we were told, hey, there's going to be one person on the truck, this can be efficient, safer, but there's been two people out there, I think for the first month. Have they answered that? I presume it's figuring out the growing pains and helping align the barrels, or?
So I think they really.
It won't be, it won't be long term, right? There'll just be one person still?
Yeah, so interestingly, the, so the first complaint I got was that there was people who talked to the driver, and he was the only driver, and how could we only have one? And it's late and we're not, they're picked up, right? And now we, right? And then all of a sudden, now we have two, because it wasn't going well and we complained, and then we got complaints, because there was two. So I'm like, oh no! I don't know what to do! So I think that they've brought on additional people to try to assist us, and the hope is that they'll be able to go down to one person using the automated arm on the truck as we all get used to the system.
One truck in our town.
Yes, less emissions.
Exactly. That's the big thing, I think. People said, oh, we voted for this, that we would get it every week, and it's true, because I was part of that, negotiating that contract. But this is, in many ways, it's better. It's, because every time the truck goes out, people with their cars behind have to wait, you know, have to worry about not hitting somebody or as they're coming around too quick or whatever.
School pickup and drop off is always difficult with a trash truck.
But it's, it's not a bad thing to have less trucks on the road or not have more trucks on the road at the same time. So I think once everybody, and with the barrels being so big, it's, it helps as well.
I do have one more question about the barrels. So people may already have a bin that has the bar, which means the arm could lift it up. They need a second bin, but they want to use the one they already have in addition to the one that the town gave them.
I would not, I would say you have to use the issue bin.
Tell them that they should ask for a second green bin from the town and get rid of their other bins.
Because they're specced directly to the truck.
Because it came from another town often, that they have that bin that. Well, I mean, a lot of people bought those big blue ones and, okay.
Yeah, it's specced exactly to the truck. I haven't seen, yeah.
That's fine. And then, so, yeah, okay.
And again, we apologize. I think we're, we're keeping on it. It's a constant con prestation. But, you know, I do, if you remember quickly, we really struggled with trash for a while, and we continued to have conversations and continued to document, and it definitely got better. So I think continuing to do that and continuing to work up through these kind of pickups is going to be helpful.
It hasn't even been a month yet.
It has.
So most families have only had two pickups. So it's still learning the process.
The other question I've been getting is, can I turn my old recycling bin into a trash bin? And I would say if you can label it clearly enough to say that it is trash, add it to, yes, okay, just check in.
Absolutely. I keep my little recycle bin in my house and put my recycling in it and then take it outside to the big bin.
Right.
You know, so you don't, you could recycle that as well. The reason that, just so everyone knows, the reason the red bins need to be picked up separately, or your old recycle bins, is because we actually got flagged by the company that takes the recycling, because they were all commingled in. And so that's why they have to pick it up on separate days. They have a separate truck coming through just getting the empty bins.
The driver Lily came by in his pickup truck, stacking them in, throwing them in the back.
And that's happening on Saturdays.
That's happening on Saturdays.
Are they circulating the whole town every Saturday? Because I had someone say theirs was not picked up, and I thought maybe they just hadn't gotten to that area of town yet.
I think they're doing their best to circulate the entire town every Saturday.
But they should report it if it's.
Report it if yours is out there, yes, absolutely. But they will not pick it up on the regular day of recycling, because they got, we got the complaint, so.
Okay. Makes sense.
Jim, did I miss anything about recycling?
Thanks, Jim.
People are using the barrels as trash bins.
Oh, yes. So some people are using their new recycle bin as a trash can. So the sticker that we're getting says recycling on a humongous lettuce, so hopefully that will help.
I'm actually really glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Are they just going to put it on the bin?
They're going to stick it on the bin.
Okay.
They're going to do it. And that's what they told us. And, you know, we do have on our website a big red banner about recycling, and it does have frequently asked questions, and you can even, thanks to Jim and our IT department, you can even search your address now to find out what week you are, which was Dick's idea, and it's definitely.
That tells us what week it is when you get the website.
So it's definitely, everything you could not know about recycling is now available, so, but don't hesitate to reach out with questions.
Has everybody gotten a little more comfortable with which week it is?
I have not gotten any reported questions about what week they are anymore.
I've definitely gotten people that I thought it was this week, like, they don't, it's hard for people at this point, because it's so new to know which week it is. So I did actually ask if we could put a widget on the website that just says, it's week one, it's week two, it's week one, it's week two.
Police roadway signs, saying, everyone, recycle week one, recycle week two.
Something that, like, you know, if it changes automatically, anyway, might make
life a little easier.
We'd have to move it to the neighborhood, of which it should tell an eye or show.
Any other discussion about recycling? We've had a very busy beginning of this meeting. Gotten through all the fun stuff. Okay. If everybody's ready, we're going to head into new business, which is, our first item is to vote to waive the permit fees for repairs due to the August eighth rain slash flooding event. So I know we had sort of just talked about it, but I'll let you.
So under our state of emergency, we did put, already put forward authorization to waive permit fees related to the event, but we wanted to have you vote to ratify that as well. So that's for any businesses or residents who come in, were affected by the flooding, and we're keeping track of what that would be. And as you all know, we did do that for Columbia Gas as well.
Okay. I will take a motion if there are...
I'll move that we waive the permit fees for any work that needs to be done to mitigate the results from the flooding or repairs due to the rain flooding event of August 8, 2023.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Lots of seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Item B, vote to approve ARPA funding requests. So, all right, I'm gonna turn it back over to all the interested parties.
I have so many friends here today.
You have a lot of friends today.
So first, we have the fire department, so if you wouldn't mind inviting Chief Weir, he can tell you a little bit about his request.
Come on up, Chief Weir, please.
Hi, good evening. Town manager came to all the department heads after ARPA and said, you know, look, excuse me after COVID, and asked us how to, what we needed to do to help prepare ourselves and our crews to better serve the town, and lessons we've learned. And one of the things we've found is, through our response, being able to prepare, being able to have stockpiles of PPE and stuff was a major thing for storage for that equipment. A lot of training opportunities that came up quickly, and a lot of unforeseen changes that we had to make on our infrastructure in order to deal with the pandemic. So part of this, this funding is for us to be better prepared for some of that. Some of the byproduct of aftermath, I guess you would say, of the pandemic is we're having difficulty now trying to purchase vehicles and things. We ordered an ambulance, was approved by town meeting for capital purchase for an ambulance this past year, where we ordered it, and it's 20 to 24 months out. So our current ambulance that we're replacing is gonna be over 160,000 hard miles by the time it gets replaced. So part of this would be to allow us to possibly put a down payment on the future one that we're coming up to try to get that in the pipeline, because by the time we get this ambulance, we'll be ready for the, in the succession plan that we had, we'll be ready for the next one. And we're finding that a lot of our equipment, we're running into issues like that. Part of this money also that we're requesting is came out of, came back to light again in lieu of the flooding, later the flooding that we just had. The onslaught of calls coming in was overwhelming, the 911 center, just trying to prioritize where calls and where our crews had to go in an extremely short period of time. It's the same thing back when we had Columbia Gas, and some of the bad winter storms and all are part of this. We're looking to take our training room and outfit it as an emergency operations center, an EOC, where we have capability of having direct communications from there, landline communications with the 911 center, some infrastructures such as computer monitors and stuff in there, full size. So our new dispatching system program that we use, our response system would be able to be displayed, so we'd be able to, right now, we're doing everything with a, we're using a cellphone, a laptop computer, a portable radio, and a whiteboard. That's how we were basically sending everybody out for all the calls two weeks ago, so it would help us work in that respect. And some of the other things we're setting up, working with the town manager and emergency management and all, trying to get all our emergency supplies into one location. Emergency management has a lot of cots and assets that were stored at the high school. We found out, as the town manager found out, when we were evacuating residents and we didn't have ample linens and stuff, so we wanted to build a supply of that. And we had, talking about, we're setting up a trailer right now to make those assets available so that we can move it to wherever we have to, you know, set up an emergency shelter, so. And that's just some of the things we've identified, but some of this money would give us a little money so as, you know, we develop future plans, we'd be able to implement them in a timely manner, so.
May I ask you about the training room now? Would that be a permanent thing or just a quick temporary and then...
No, we're talking about setting it permanent, so anytime we had some kind of emergency like that, be ready to go.
So where would you do your training?
We would still use our training room. This would be in addition to it. We're talking about adding some computer stations in there, some infrastructure communications back and forth.
Is that you would want to maintain a training room somewhere, so, like, so you are?
Dual purpose room, exactly.
Just a more...
It uses training, it uses training on a daily basis. It would just be set up so we had, we use the room for that, like I said, with portable radios and everything. This would just give us hard infrastructure so we could, you know, better manage.
My question, I was wondering, is it gonna be, you'll set it up when you need it, or, and that's what you're doing?
No, yeah, the idea is to get it set up so you basically, as soon as you need to use it, it's ready to go. It's not, like I said...
But there's enough room in the training room?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sure you have it figured out.
Unless you wanna give us a little more money, we'll put it in there. We wouldn't happen to do that, too. That might be beyond the scope of our request.
It doesn't seem like a lot of money, chief, for all the things you wanna do there. It seems like that that's...
Feel free to amend it if you want. I wouldn't happen to take that, too.
Well, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it seems, I mean, okay, so you got a lot of good plans for that money.
I've learned that the fire department under Chief Weir makes money stretch a long way. Very impressive.
We do have some...
It is my hope that we become so well-prepared and we never, ever need to use any of it, so.
Well, I feel like we've been hit hard over the past five years now between COVID and the gas.
Wouldn't that be great?
Letting collect dust is what would be great, so.
Any other questions?
Other questions or comments?
No.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Okay, I will take a...
I'll move the select board to approve the use of ARPA funding in the amount of $250,000 for the fire department emergency services.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Item two, $65,000 for AEDs for the fields.
Okay, so that would be our health director, Brian LaGrasse.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Brian, thanks for coming.
Thanks. Pretty straightforward request here. In light of things that have happened in mainstream sports, a resident who was actually a public health nurse who helped us out during COVID approached us and said, basically, what do you guys think about doing this? Looked at it, talked about it, got some different town departments together, and looking at 15 AEDs for parks, playgrounds, and athletic fields around town. So right now, we have no infrastructure, we have no AEDs. I think it would be a great idea to install them. So some will be post-mounted, permanently installed in all-weather boxes, and a few will be building-mounted.
Will this hit all the fields and playgrounds?
Yep.
It's a great idea.
That's great that it's enough for all the fields and playgrounds.
Yes.
We were figuring you'd have to start out and...
We thought about going that route first, and then you said, let's try to get them all at once.
No, this is great. I think it's so important.
Very happy for them.
Use it, just use it once.
Even something like the farmland field, like Foster?
Foster, yep.
Callaguer, Town Farm, Atlin, Drummond, yeah. I didn't know there was power out in some of those fields. Or do you need, do you not need power?
Nope, they're battery.
The battery needs a power.
Are they solar?
No.
No, they're just both.
Nope.
So you gotta need that training room, I guess.
They check periodically.
The fire department does it annually.
Yep.
What about, what about training, like, working with some of the local sports organizations, the booster club, soccer association to train the coaches on how to use them?
I think it would be a great idea.
That would be, yeah.
I mean, I'm sure they'd be all willing to have...
Oh, we can definitely do that. I know, I've been working with Jeff, James from the fire department.
Because you think about, those are really the first responders, right?
Yes.
I think that'd be part of the coaches' training, actually, for, for the boosters club, for soccer, field hockey, I think would be, they'd be more willing to do that.
Do they go through CPR training as it is?
Coaches do, yes.
Coaches do, yeah.
And I believe most of these AEDs are fairly easy to use and do have directions on the box.
And they usually talk to you, right?
Yeah, it's on the top, yeah. So that does help, yeah. But it's good to have the training because it might make you...
They still have to recognize you.
You're not gonna be thinking...
A panic situation, yeah. Awesome. Thank you so much.
That's fair, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Let's do it. Oh, how long will it take? Sorry. How long till they'll be installed? Do we have a lead time or anything?
We'll have to go a little bit.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Are these on back order or anything, or like every other...
I would defer to the chief on that one, if he knows.
I don't know specific about these models, but I know just the infrastructure, getting the bid together, all the things aren't available, we're coming in a little more, so.
Great, that's great. But any other questions? If not, I will take a motion.
I'll move the select board to approve the use of ARPA funding in the amount of $65,000 for AEDs for the fields.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. And our third ARPA request is a $450,000 request for small business support, so.
That would be Andrew Shannell.
Andrew, thank you.
This is relatively straightforward as well, obviously, in light of everything that's gone on with respect to the floods, but also the desire for the town to want to do, to utilize some ARPA funding for general economic development as well and support of businesses. We're recommending $450,000 total. We would plan to set aside about $250,000 total for flood-affected businesses, and as the town manager mentioned earlier, we had 56 businesses submit claims information to the town for submission to MIMA, so we'd be targeting those 56 businesses in particular for eligibility, at least in the short, in the near term. And I think we would look to run the grant program in a very similar fashion as to how we're running the residential relief grant program. We'd want it to be a reimbursable grant for, you know, any costs associated with replacement of equipment or business-related items that were damaged in the flood, or similar reimbursable sort of expenses as related to flood mitigation. So we want to help those businesses as quickly as we possibly can, and the maximum grant award would be about $5,000. So that can, you know, with 56 businesses, that's $280,000 total, so we're just under that, you know, setting aside about $250,000. But we envision that maybe some of the reimbursement requests will be a little less than $5,000 as we've seen with some of the residential requests. And then, as I mentioned before, an additional $200,000 would be set aside for general economic development or business support, so we would do that a little bit later. I think right now, we want to focus on the flood-affected businesses, and then maybe by the end of the year, we'll get a grant program set up to help with general expenses, capital expenditures that businesses have, you know, and things like, things of that nature, to support them.
Yeah, so the additional $200,000 for general development, you're anticipating that people being, investing in their businesses, not necessarily just, I'm just trying to figure how you, where you see that working?
Yeah, I mean, I think investing in businesses, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that...
To grow or...
Exactly, so, you know, an extra piece of equipment or, you know, something that's going to enable them to, you know, if there's something that's, that's, you know, that they're in need of, whatever it might be.
Renovations.
Renovation, yep. So hard expenses, basically.
Will there also be a cap on that, like, is that also like a...
Yeah, so again, $5,000, we're doing that across the board, $5,000. So that would support 40 businesses if you're looking at the $200,000.
And for the flood-impacted businesses, I mean, obviously, some $5,000 isn't gonna go nearly far compared to others who may not have a lot. If you're setting aside 250 or whatever the number is, is there an opportunity for some of those businesses to come back and exceed the cap? Would you have the discretion to exceed that if it was needs-based?
Um, you know, I think it's...
Is that not good practice?
You know, I think, you know, it's hard to go back when you set up, set up a cap because then other businesses who might have also done that say to themselves, well, I could have, you know, gone for $7, $7,500 if I knew that I could have gotten, you know, a couple thousand dollars more. So it's kind of difficult to do that. One thing I will say is we were intending to allow the flood-affected businesses to come back in the second grant round as well, so in theory, they'd be eligible for a total of $10,000 all told. Granted, you know, it would take time to get that full amount of money because we would be setting up that second grant program later in the year. But hopefully, that second round of funding would also be helping some of those flood-affected businesses as well. And by the way, I just want to say, you know, the town realizes that, you know, $5,000, you know, for all the damage that's been calculated is, in many cases, you know, a drop in the bucket, but, you know, as the town manager was mentioning before, we're waiting a long time to get some information from FEMA, you know, it's gonna take paperwork and processing, and in a lot of those cases, it may not even come in the form of a grant, it may end up being a low-interest loan or something like that. So we're hoping the deployment of even a small amount of capital in this period of time will be helpful to some, to cover some, you know, nominal things that are going on to recover from this situation.
And there are some small businesses that do have less than $5,000 worth of damage that lost, you know, their last equipment or massage tables, that kind of thing, that at least this would make an impact for some of those smaller businesses, too.
Back up and running, yeah.
Yeah.
Or at least fail the models of financial difficulties.
And it is, I know $5,000 isn't a ton of money when you're talking millions, but thank you for getting that money together and offering some support to our small businesses because, you know, this is not an insured, they can't go against insurance claims, right? And this is totally unexpected and not anything anybody could prepare for, so we're trying.
Yeah.
You guys are all trying your best to come up with some creative solutions, so we really appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it's great. It's literally the definition of American Rescue Plan. So, I would, chair, I would move approval for the $450,000 to benefit local businesses.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you all, and thank everybody for coming today. Moving on to item C, appointments. We are looking to appoint Shane Nevens to emergency management, Vince Artisoni to constable, and Peter Kosterherm, sorry for not pronouncing that correctly, to the Affordable Housing Trust. Do you guys want to speak to...
Again, Shane, I think, has been, we interviewed Shane a while ago, and then he was working with emergency management and to find that, make sure we had a good fit, and I think that was something that has certainly come to fruition. So, yeah, Shane is gonna be a good, good fit for the emergency management. Vince was, came to us for an open constable position that we have. He actually lives in Andover, but there's not a restriction of where they have to live to fill that spot as a constable. So he went through the due diligence and the background checks and whatever required for constable position, and is a good fit for that position. And then Peter, who's here with us tonight, is really looking forward to having him join the Affordable Housing Trust. He's got a lot of, a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of good ideas, and I think we're really fortunate to have him joining, and I think he's the first one who's ever come to one of these where they're getting appointed, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So I think, you know, really, three good appointments.
Awesome. Any questions right now?
Oh, no, we've covered everything. Okay.
Okay, I will take a motion.
All right, then I move that the select board appoint Shane Nevens to emergency management for a term ending June 30, 2024, Vince Artisoni as constable for a term ending June 30, 2026, and Peter Kosterherm to Affordable Housing Trust for a term ending June 30, 2025.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second then.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you all, we're looking forward and grateful to your service. Item, oh, we're gonna head into licensing now, so I will take a motion.
I'll move the, move into licensing.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Thank you, we are now in licensing. One problem that I'm having, I read the packet at home, but my paper sheet does not have the hummus.
Nope.
Somebody has it.
We have a table.
Oh, okay, well, that makes sense. Okay. Okay, so again, we are now in licensing. First item on the licensing agenda is an application for Armin Jaknevarian is here to put a, help me with my name, pronouncing it.
This is an annual request.
Okay. So having said that, this is a special one-day liquor, liquor and entertainment license, seems to be cleared by building, fire, police, and health, and this event is at 159 Main Street on Sunday, September 10, between the hours of 12 and 6:00. And included in this packet, which is very complete, is a request to waive fees, and the select board has waived fees in the past.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request from St. Gregory's Church for a one-day wine and malt liquor license and a one-day entertainment license for a picnic on September 10, 10, 23, from 12 to 6:00, and that we waive the fees for that. Just in the chat.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're good with that. And the next item is for application from Starbucks for a common victual license at 1264 Osgood Street. As you, I see your two-year feet, so I presume you're here to talk about the Starbucks.
Yep, thank you all.
Which is another very thick and complete application.
Good. So my name's Dan Brennan. I handle permits and licenses for Starbucks, bringing a third Starbucks over to North Andover. And it actually looks like the nicest one. Looks pretty nice. So the store's just over 3,000 square feet. We have 38 seats inside, a patio with 20 seats. We just got our certificate of occupancy on Thursday, and the drive-through's actually been open over the weekend. So we're hoping to open the inside.
That's gonna be my big question because I have heard it 100 times this week. When are they gonna open? So inside will be opened also after?
Tomorrow.
If we decide to. It's good news.
It's been a hot topic, when is Starbucks opening?
It's the rumors. They don't have any staff, they don't have, you know.
It's kind of funny. So everyone, once it's open, it's really gonna be all keyed up in town with all those coffee facilities. That's great. Any questions from the board, any comments?
Welcome to not the end of our, again.
There we go.
Madam Chair, I will move the Select Board Acting as Licensing Commissioners to approve the application from Starbucks Corporation, DBA Starbucks Coffee for a common victual license at 1264 Osgood Street.
I'll second.
Okay, there's just one thing that the police department felt as though if there was an overflow that you would hire a special detail.
Yeah, I saw that.
And you saw that, you're all set with that. Just to make sure that's included.
I'll make that amendment to the motion that, I don't know what the definition of overflow is, but.
Traffic.
I have a feeling that the police will let them know.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there is an overflow of traffic on Osgood Street, that Starbucks will hire a detail officer to control that.
Such a worry, right? That you've got overflow business.
I'll second that with that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'm abstaining from this vote.
Oh, okay, for the record. Okay, congratulations.
Does that mean we can open the inside tomorrow or? Just wanted to make sure. Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So everyone will be in for coffee tomorrow. What time do you open? Let the public know.
5:00 AM.
Oh, dear God.
5:00 AM, all right.
Probably doesn't have to go over the menu.
Okay, and the next item is.
The next one's the hummus.
I have it right here.
Yeah.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is an application from Christina Ferrara Aruda, forgive me, DBA Ava Moon Vintage Antiques for a junk dealer license at 67 Main. Is that you?
That's me.
Okay.
You know what to do. You've seen them come before you, so.
Hello, my name is Christina Aruda, and I am, I would like to open up an antique store on 67 Main Street. And as of right now, I don't have a license for selling antiques. I didn't know that was something that I needed. I do have my business license and my occupancy permit, but as of Tuesday of last week, I wanted to join the Moms of North Andover just to get some, you know, some attention. And that was kind of like a flag here in North Andover, like, Christina. So I got a phone call and they said, Christina, you're gonna have a grand opening on Saturday from 12:00 to 2:00. I said, yes. And they're like, yeah, you can't do that. And then I said, what do you mean I can't do that? I said, I have my business license, I'm ready to go. They're like, no, you don't have, you don't have a license. I was so sad, I almost cried. So and I said, okay, tell me what I need to do. So they're like, okay, how about you fill out this application? So I said, I don't have a printer right now, it's stuck, it's jammed. So let me take a walk up the street, let me fill out what it is that I need. So I went to fill out my paperwork, and I needed to make an appointment to get my fingerprints. And I said, my fingerprints? I've never been fingerprinted in my life. I said, okay, okay, what do I need to do? So they're like, okay, need to make an appointment. I said, I can't wait for an appointment. So I got in my car and I went. So I explained to the police officer, I was like, I'm supposed to have a grand opening on Saturday and I can't because I don't have a license. They're like, well, you can't get fingerprinted unless you make an appointment. I said, please, you have to help me. He goes, all right, let me see. So we went, I got fingerprinted, I came back within 20 minutes, and the girls were like, you're done? And I said, yeah, what else do you need? Like, I need to get this done. So here I am. I just want a license, I want to pursue my passion. I was an antique dealer at Canal Street for three years. And Mama needs to do her thing. I'm ready, so it's up to you if I can get my license.
That enthusiasm.
I need this. This is like, ugh, ugh, can't. I'm like, so I've been closed since last Wednesday, you know, so it's tough for me.
Now, do you have a sign up?
I have, right now, so because it's like considered a grand opening, I have a temporary, like, flag up. I know I need a permit for it, but I guess.
You do, that's what I was gonna want you. Please don't go out and spend a lot of money on a sign till you have the permit and know how big, what size lighting, like, no lighting is really.
Yeah, no lighting, it's just like a regular, like, just a flag, but the police officer, no.
People make that mistake, and it's an expensive mistake.
No, no, it's a, no, it's a zazzle, it's a zazzle flag. But, so his name is Paul, he's part of the alarm, he had the building inspector. He's like, yeah, you can put it up for a little, like, you have, while you have your grand opening, just, you know, it's all fine, but you need to get a permit. I said, okay, I need to get my permit, it's $30, the flag is on there, like, I got this, so. I'm on top of it, it's just, I need my license.
There you go.
Yes, please. Help Mama out.
So while you're there, could you want to tell the public who might be watching a little bit about what kinds of products that you have?
Oh, I totally forgot. Oh, my goodness.
Well, you have some of it written in the application.
So Ava Moon Vintage Antiques is something that is collective. It is my style. It's old, it's new. If you love mirrors, you love brass, you love old furniture, you like distressed furniture. I'm a furniture artist, so I take an old piece and I make it new. I stencil it, custom pieces. Yeah, my dad's an upholsterer, so if you need anything, let me know. Tony Ferrera's got his, you know, his side business for 42 years. So we're kind of like, you know, my dad's been an antique dealer since, I don't know, since 1981. He's had a Ferrera upholstery shop for 42 years, so it's just, it's what I, it's me. It's what I grew up doing. Auctions, antiques, flea markets, it's my passion.
Did you reschedule your grand opening event?
No, I'm gonna cry because I don't know.
You will.
So I don't know.
You just tell us when it's gonna be.
It'll be all right. You could have two.
Okay.
And your hours are gonna be 10:00 to 6:00?
Yes.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? And then 10:00 to 5:00 on Saturday and 10:03 on Sunday? You're gonna be very busy.
For now, because I need to know the traffic. I don't know my traffic. I was only open for four days before I was flagged, so. So, yeah, so I know there's a farmer's market on Sunday, so I'd like to, you know, be open during that timeframe, you know.
Great idea. Highly recommend that.
Great idea.
Yeah, so shpechta, I'm smart.
Okay, any further questions from the board?
Nope. Welcome to North Andover, happy to have you.
Yay. Thank you. I'll make a motion that the Select Board Acting as Licensing Commissioners approve the application from Christina Ferrera Aruda, DBA Ava Moon Vintage Antiques for a junk dealer license at 67 Main Street. Yay.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. I can't wait to come into your business.
We really need to get an antique dealer license, though, because it doesn't sound right.
Oh, the chuckling is awful. We need to change that at a town meeting. Can we do that, or is it a state thing?
State thing.
Oh, we need to get them to change it, that's awful.
Can I open tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
What time you open?
I mean, yeah, 10:00 o'clock.
10:00 AM.
All right.
10:00 AM. I'll be there.